Hello, I'm Noah Van Dyk, an executive council member of the Marion County Public Schools Student Ambassadors. I also served on the Student Ambassador Teacher of the Year Award Committee. Today, I am excited to share with you three finalists for our Elementary Division Teacher of the Year Award. We reviewed very carefully all nominations, which had identifying information, including the nominee's name and name of school redacted. Our selections were based exclusively on teaching practices outlined in the nomination form. Next, a group from outside of the school district will select the overall winner, and we plan to announce those winners next week, which is Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you, and here are the Elementary Division finalists.
Well Stacy is always full of resources. It doesn't matter if it's a new book to go along with what we're teaching or technology, she is always on it. Her lessons are very engaging, very hands-on. The kids are very engaged and she also, every year she does, she hatches out chicken eggs. So she has baby chicks and the kids love it. She loves her students. She takes good care of her students. She treats them as her own. And they know that they're loved in her room.
She does one stuff with us. We get to play on 99 math.
She likes geography. So like, if you have a globe, then like, then like, there's all kinds of countries like North America, South America, Africa, Asia, Europe, and Oceania. And I get to look at all of them.
We get to do times. We're learning addition. We did, we decorated, like, we made earth plates and we colored it and painted it.
Molly is a great colleague just because she always puts others before herself. So no matter what, especially her teammates, she always is caring about what we need and what's going on. You know, if we have a sick day, she's always making sure we have our plans. She'll make them for us. She'll be like, "I got this. No, you rest. You'll be fine."
I would say she's very passionate about math and she's always looking for fun and creative ways to engage her students. Most importantly, I mean, her love for math kind of goes into their love for math. They can see how much she loves math, so then they all also feel that way. Most importantly, I feel like she loves her students so much and they know that every time they walk through the door. So she has high expectations of them and they rise to the occasion.
She knows what to do when there are problems. She can explain, she can explain stuff really well. She's really nice. She does really fun stuff once in a while. Like after we do a test, like a really big test, then she'll probably like throw a party or something.
She takes time and makes math really fun for us. And she also like sings like us a song and it's called "Area and Perimeter." She's always happy. She's always like ready to go. She's always here, just ready to teach us. Always like bright and positive.
Ms. Stein is a phenomenal teacher. First of all, I think she always puts the students first. She is one that will go looking endlessly to find the perfect lesson or engaging lesson for the kids. She is a phenomenal reading teacher. She makes it exciting for the students. She also pushes them. I mean, she makes them work and she pushes them to be their very best. And sometimes that's a little bit out of their comfort zone, but she wants what's best for her students.
I would say Ms. Stein is a great teacher because how loving and caring she is. Like anything, like if you're having a bad day, she'll find a way to switch it around and make it good. Probably learning about like text structures because whenever we were doing like allusions, she would make like the funniest jokes ever for them. Someone you can actually like talk to, like if there's like something that's just like on your brain, something like that, you just like go to her and she'll like fix something and make you feel like more comfortable about it. You're not like super stressed or anything like that. Like funny and joyful. Like she always has a bunch of energy. She always tries to make something very boring, make it like something very boring, making it very like joyful and happy and not annoying.
Lucky for me, what makes Ms. Stein a great teacher is not only is she my co-teacher, but she's my very best friend on the face of the earth. She's been my coworker on and off for probably the last 15 years. She's always there for me. She's a great teacher. She loves children. And she just always puts 110% effort into everything that she does. Fun-loving. I mean, fun is the first thing that comes to my mind when I think about her interaction with her students. They know that she loves them and she just wants to make everything that she does a fun interaction in her classroom. She works on holidays. She works summer breaks. She's always just trying to improve, improve her craft in any way that she can. Just I'm super proud of my bestie.
Hello, I'm Joy Rose Wheatley, an executive council member of the Marion County Public School Student Ambassadors. I also served on the Student Ambassador's Teacher of the Year Award Committee. Today, I'm excited to share with you the three finalists for our Secondary Division Teacher of the Year Award. We reviewed very carefully all of the nominations, which had identifying information, including the nominee's name and the school name redacted. Our selections were based exclusively on the teaching practices outlined in the nominations form. Again, we want to congratulate all of the nominees as it was a very difficult decision to narrow the list to three finalists. Next, a group from outside of the school district will select the overall winners, and we plan to announce those winners next week, which is Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you, and here are the Secondary Division finalists.
Every time I walk into Ms. Allen's classroom, I'm seeing the things that an administrator wants to see in a teacher. I've seen amazing reading strategies being pushed out in her social studies curriculum. The kids have hands-on projects. They're always taking virtual field trips. Ms. Allen is always up moving around the room, helping students. She just has the kindest heart and her love for the Marion County students is very evident every time you walk into her room.
She's a really fun teacher. She makes jokes and she talks to everybody in the hallways and she keeps everything in control. And it was more like, it was great, like art. And we did like every, every different like minute, we would make a project for that.
She like always, always doing something in her class. We're always doing projects. She explains like how we do everything and it's always just really fun for us. We have done this project where we, it was this Alexander the Great project. It was good. He was a good leader or not, like if you wanted, like if you had one thing or if it isn't, and then you poster, it just depended on how you thought of Alexander the Great.
Is this his work?
Yes. Yes.
Lisa Moner is an awesome teacher and coworker. I've had the pleasure of working with her this year. She's incredibly creative with her lessons and how to get kids engaged, and I just, I could not ask for a better partner. So she creates creative hooks for our kids to get them engaged into the content. She will include images and anything pop culture that we can relate to social studies in the Western history. She also includes music and those types of things, just to get the kids hooked and engaged into the lesson.
So Lisa Moner, fantastic educator for one, amazingly experienced. And she's really, really great at collaborating with her colleagues, especially being a first-time teacher. She's taught everything she's learned and her experience, given me great resources, just been a fantastic educator.
She knows what she's teaching and she's passionate about it. Some kids need that extra help. How she set up her classroom is like someone that doesn't need the help, but someone that also does, so it balances out.
Well, Ms. Moner, she's pretty energetic and she likes interacting with her students. She's really, she's a happy teacher too. She's nice to all the students. She works with them. She's, I just think she's a good teacher with how she handles her students and how she handles teaching.
25:30, time to call this regular meeting to get the Marion County Bureau of Education into order and the person who's assigned the motion on item 1A, please.
I would like a motion to approve the May 9, 2024 Board Meeting in general.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to item two is our pledge of allegiance in the moment of silence, for everybody to stand and face the flag. Attention, salute pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, truth and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright, so we have a packed house for item 3A, which is our student recognition. How many of you love this?
Alright, so the first student, Will Blake, senior. There he is, way back down the aisle. So we would like to recognize junior Will Blake for a 1520, perfect 1520 PSA too. So next, we have the Gear Up Kentucky 2023-24 Student of the Year sophomore, Andrew Manningly. Alright, now we have some STLP award winners and there are lots of those. So when I call the school, I want you to come up with your sponsors. So GES sponsor Lee Morgeson, is Lee here? Okay. Alright, so that would be Brayden Morgeson that got the second place digital photo essay. Next, we have West Marion, April Montgomery. Yeah, April's right there. And I'm gonna let her tell us about, so if you're from West Marion, come on up. So the first one we have is first place in media literacy awareness, and that was all the third graders.
All the third graders. It was a project I did with all of them.
Awesome. And then, did you, you just wanna tell them?
Sure, sure. The group that is on the end there, they made a PSA after school one day and received second place for that PSA at state. This group, and I'll introduce them, Drew Mudd, Josiah Buckler, Owen Smith, Phoenix Wayne, and Damian Wayne. And Leila. Fisher, yes. F was coming into my brain. I have so many students. Presley Gordon and Missin Trailer, and then Erin Bean, who's not here today. They had a one-day challenge. They had to program, they arrived with their robot already built, but they had to program it that day. And they were state champions. See, this is the PSA. Thank you.
And then we have engineering.
Yes, yes. And this last group was UK Engineering Minds on Innovation. They came in second place and they have been working on a project for a very long time. Do you wanna explain what you did with your project? What did you do?
So we made a bleacher rail cart so that we, so that the bleacher rails from the bleachers, they're almost 40 pounds and every day the teachers have to carry them across the gym. So we made a cart so that we could just set them on there and bring it across the gym. And normally they would just be leaning up against the wall upside down. And that is a hazard. It could fall over and hurt someone. So we made a cart that way, that wouldn't happen anymore.
And they received second place for their assignment. They actually made protests.
If you fell in the back, don't mind me come up where you get your picture. We can see you all.
And then here's some of my third graders. I'll let you know when.
If you wanna come over.
This one.
How's the memory personal? Alright, three, two, one.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Congratulations. Alright, Mr. Terrell, you're on deck. So Mr. Terrell stepping in for Ms. Cailing this evening. So you wanna talk a little bit about what they want?
Yes, sir. So SCLP, we love it. It's awesome. Our kids really get excited about something they work towards all year. And these kids actually, they did so well that they were in place like the others. First up, Kelly Willett. She did digital photography that she did. She actually came in first place. Same place you did really well. You wanna talk about what your picture was?
So I took the picture of this barb piece that was behind, that was in front of a sunset. And it was in a really weird posture, but it was really fun to do.
So competing in that second overall in state, which was fantastic. We also have our Georgetown Robotics kids, Liam Sawyer, Colton Caroline. This is actually our third year doing Georgetown Robotics and we actually won state three in a row. Oh, where's this team? I'm gonna give them later. My bad. Standing too close. So we have a couple of kids who didn't get to make it. So they actually designed something and how it would do it to solve a problem. You all wanna talk about what you all designed? It's really cool.
We built a robot that would help in their everyday life with people's back problems that can't bend down. They would drive the robot and spin this wheel that would make trash go into a container and it would store it by itself.
It was awesome. They had different little tasks they had to complete, which went really, really well. So very, very proud of them. And we also, so West Marion, they won the RC Robotics of theirs, which they had to get their, build a robot and code and they did fantastic. Well, we got RCX for the driven robot. So Marion County actually dominated this RCX competition. So these fellows drove and actually, did you all get to drive or who was the driver? Did you all get to drive? Somebody else turned and drive? How was that?
I only all drove.
You all drove, but it was pretty hard looking. You had to move certain things to certain spots. So it was a great time. Love SCLP. These kids did fantastic, along with all the other kids who went up there and competed. It's a rough arena, so it's just such a good event, such a great opportunity for these kids to go out and show out what they can do. It's really cool seeing, you know, our small Marion County rural community go up there and compete against all these kids across the state and Southern. So you all did fantastic and put your time.
Yep.
Item 3B is our staff recognition, so keep it up.
Alright, so next, Mr. C. I saw him here earlier. There he is. So Mr. C is our 2023-24 Gear Up Kentucky Outstanding Educator for Marion County.
I'm just really glad that I had a chance to be part of the Gear Up program. I know that transferring from high school to the adult world is really tough for a lot of kids and they don't know what to do. They don't know what a credit score is. They don't know what compounding interest on a loan is. And like when I graduated high school, I didn't know those things either. And so for our Gear Up crew to come in and teach them about that and say, hey, these are things you need to think about aside from going to college and things like that. These are part of adult living that a lot of people don't tell you about and get you in a lot of trouble. So I was just glad to be part of that and I'm really glad the kids get to benefit from it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alright. So next, we have our 2024 CKEC Teacher of the Year from Marion County, and that is LES Teacher, Mr. Michael Ray. Is Mr. Right here? Okay, so Mr. Ray's not here. Alright, next up, I see Ms. Van Waal. We'll give it a second to clear out there. Yeah, you can come on up. So last Friday, I had the good fortune to go to Lexington and Ms. Van Waal was awarded the Deep Learning and Innovative Educator Award. That's a mouthful, but it's for CKEC. So Ms. Van Waal is our gifted, talented coordinator. She does a fantastic job and we're very appreciative of what she do.
Oh, good, thanks. Moving on to item 3C is public comment, and we don't have anybody signed up for this evening. So we'll move on to item 3D, our superintendent report.
So kind of as we have been doing, we'll start with facilities. So as you can see there, the New Calvary Elementary School is taking shape quite nicely. It's starting to actually look and feel like a real school because the brick is being added. So you can see a picture there. Continuing on for some student success, Marion County High School had nine students that were invited to GSB, three students for GSE, and one student was accepted to Murray State's Commonwealth Honors Academy. And we're gonna have those students be here in the June meeting. They've been invited for that. I just wanted to kinda give you a sneak peek of that and let you know. And for the, for the record, this is a record, so we are very proud of Marion County High School and those students. So continuing on, some cool pictures there. Ms. K1 Class at Levon Elementary School celebrated their sight words with an ice cream sundae, so you can see those smiles there. This is a pretty cool project. So junior Ty Carrico repurposed a family heirloom that his grandmother had through the area Technology Center's Construction Carpentry Program, so you can see what he did with that there. Some project-based learning going on. So we do have some staff success here. So we have had quite a few of our Marion County teachers who have been working through the, what's called the letters program. So it's essentials for teachers of reading and spelling. And Ms. Thomas, and I think a couple of those teachers are gonna say something about that.
Okay, so we have several of our teachers from Cohort One of the Letters Academy. As Mr. Brady said, this is a professional learning, voluntary professional learning opportunity that focuses in on reading and spelling and language. We have approximately 42 teachers and three administrators who went through this professional learning. It is a two-year course and we've got a couple of our teachers on the list that we would like to recognize. We recognize all of our teachers, but a couple of our teachers are with us tonight. In your pocket, you have some quotes from them. We kind of asked them how letters impacted your learning, your teacher, or your teaching, and what would you tell others about this professional learning? So if I could have those teachers from Cohort One from us, like Ms. Smay, like Ms. Russell. Ms. Mathers, thank you. Because real quickly, what was the best part of letters for you?
Well, for me, my brother was instructional coach after math interventionist and years in intermediate. I decided I needed to learn how to teach phonics. So that's been great for me. I've been able to support my teachers, just knowing a little bit more about the science of reading and how that learning takes place.
Well, as an administrator, you know, I do a lot of observations and evaluations with teachers and I think it helped to give me a better perspective on what they were doing with the science of reading and to kind of watch for those things and then help others. And the teachers that have been going through the program, I see a huge difference in their kids when I go in the room and how they're being taught and how they're receiving that. And then I encourage them to share with other teachers who haven't been through the program to share some of that knowledge and information to help those kids to grow even quicker, you know, in that science of reading and phonics and phonics awareness.
Ms. Mathers is one of our kindergarten teachers. She is definitely in the thick of it, teaching kids to read.
So I did this because I wanted to be able to teach kindergarten students to learn how to read better. So I really wanted to deviate into the science of reading and my role of phonics and putting awareness.
Really proud because this has not been an easy task, it's a two-year process. They meet in live sessions, sometimes a whole day at a time, so a lot of work. Could I ask a question, Ms. Jamie? Like as a teacher with this training, how did you see that your classroom is different? Like what are some of the changes that you feel like that you made or not had to make because you were doing some of those things?
Honestly, there's like a lot of things that I didn't know that I wish I had learned in college. So just being able to learn how to teach them how to read and just change things in the realm. Like maybe we were doing like a letter a week when we should have maybe introduced the whole alphabet in the first six to eight weeks so that we can start blending and making awareness. And listening to what you're saying, it's a big difference.
Thank you.
Alright, continuing on, Levon Elementary School fifth graders went to Danville for an art and social studies field trip. And students visited the Southern Women exhibit at the Arts Center of the Bluegrass. And they also dined at La Costa Nostra, which is an Italian restaurant there in Danville. And they received some etiquette lessons from the Marion County Extension Agency. They see some pictures there as well. So the Marion County EMS visited recently with our health science emergency procedures, which was what students were learning at the area technology center. So this is a pretty cool project, but the fishing rod club at Marion County Night Academy used the rods they build during the club days, which was a project that the Marion County Education Foundation funded last year. So that, Mr. Ham sponsors that, so you can see some pictures there. It's really a neat project that they did. So continuing on, our big moments. Our Marion County Student Ambassadors have named the finalists for the annual Teacher of the Year Awards. And students are gonna present those overall winners, trophies tomorrow. So Mr. Simpson has worked with the ambassadors to create this. This is the second year that we've done it, so I will ask him to say a few things about the process. And what it's meant to those students and staff.
In a lot of ways, this is the season of teacher awards. And last year, the Student Ambassadors started this project and the goal was to create a Teacher of the Year Award that was uniquely ours, that was uniquely Marion County Public Schools through the ambassador program. So last year, we worked with a group of students and came up with a set of guidelines. And basically, we invite administrators at every school to nominate teachers. It's highly focused on things that occurred this school year. And one way we describe it is, we wanna think of it as like an MVP award for this particular year. So they're encouraged to describe projects those teachers put into place or initiatives that occurred this year. I receive those nominations and I redact all the identifying information. And then a panel of Student Ambassadors review them, narrows it down to three finalists. And then, just to avoid any possibility of any bias whatsoever, we take those three finalists, names redacted, we send them to a group outside the school district, but then select the overall winners. And then we surprise those winners, those secondary and elementary divisions visiting their classroom. And that will be tomorrow. And those are the trophies that last year the ATC built for us. And we order nameplates so that trophy travels each year and we add a name to it each year. so that trophy travels each year, and we add a name to it each year. Again, it's just in the second year, but we're hoping it becomes a tradition, and that's the plan for tomorrow.
Jason, how many awards are there? I can't read them, sorry.
So we do an elementary division, and then we do a secondary division, middle schools, six through 12.
Yeah, and those are the six finals.
Yeah.
So continuing on, this is the second year that we've done a partnership with Campbell's ville University. So it's actually part of one of their education classes, students will visit with Marion County Public Schools. They actually do observations. They come here in this office for a session about the overall, what they've seen and what Marion County Public Schools has to offer. So it, it's a unique opportunity for both the students at Campbell'sville University and for the district with our attracting and recruiting component. So you can see there the picture of our Campbell'sville University students that recently visited with us. And then finally, lots of, like Mr. Simpson mentioned earlier, lots of appreciation going right now. Of course, this is Teacher Appreciation Week, School Principal Day recently, School Lunch Hero Day, School Nurse Day, School Communicators and Public Relations Day, and Speech Language Pathologist Day. So lots of celebrations going on this week.
Moving on to item three E is our NTI data and academic progress report.
Thank you for allowing us to present tonight on the end of the year performance review. Before we get started, just want to say academic progress is rarely the year. It's usually two steps forward, one step back, but we're, we're excited tonight to say that we are pretty much all two steps forward on this, and we haven't seen, but in a couple areas, some retracement. So overall, we're really excited to share with you this evening.
So we're going to start out with I-R-E-D data. If you go ahead, Kim. Do you remember I-R-E-D is our diagnostic assessment in reading and math for grades K through eight. It's our predictor for KSA performance and is given three times each year. It's also part of our personalized learning platform as well.
Couple of things on the I-R-E-D data that you just need to be aware of. All data is limited in what it can tell you. The I-R-E-D data that we're going to share with you tonight is what's called on grade level, and there's just two limitations to it. One would be, for example, we're in May of 2024, on grade level might be the student performance we might expect in August of 2023 because they would still be in that same grade level. So it can be a false positive or a little bit too high. But it also works in the other direction as far as if you're thinking on grade level, let's say the further you get up, let's say in seventh grade, if a child's, let's say three years behind starting out, they move up two years, it won't show up in the data. So just something to think about. So especially when you get up, and you probably think, well, when we get to the middle schools, why are those numbers so sticky? That's one of the reasons as far as the data that we're sharing with you. So we'll start out at Calvary in the fall. We started in reading at 33% on grade level. We ended up 72%. The other data that we included this year that we didn't include last year, I think might help, was year-over-year data there at the bottom. This time last year, at reading at Calvary, we're at 67%. So this year, we're at 72, which shows growth year-over-year. Read, sorry, math, at Calvary, went from 21% in the fall to 71% here most recently in the spring. Last year's data, at this point, we were at 66%. So year-over-year, we went from 66 to 71%.
Class top reading at the beginning of the year, we began, see those nice big numbers we have this.
You're wearing your contacts, right? It just might be a good time to remind all of our employees that we offer vision insurance, quality vision insurance at affordable prices. I think you'd agree, right? All right.
We began the year at 23% and ended at 60% this time last year. Class top reading was at 58%. In math, we began the year at 14% and ended at 58%, and last year, 62%.
Levitt Elementary in the fall, reading, we're at 20%. Most recently in spring, we're at 55%. Last year, we were at 51% at this time. Math, 10% in the fall, spring, 54%, and at last year, at this time, we're at 46%.
Voice Mary began the year at 25% and went up to 64%, 71% at the diagnostic rate last year. In math, 16%, up to 66%. And last year, this time, we were at 64%.
At the middle school, reading went from 40% to 45% last year. At this time, we're at 43, and on math, 28 to 42. Last year, we were at 39%.
But not economies a little bit differently because, different because we only test eighth grade. I-R-E-D only goes up to eighth grade. So we began the year at 26% in reading, ended at 39%. This time last year, we were at 38%. In math, 19%, up to 30%. And this time last year, we were at 23%.
Next data we're going to show ACT, given to our sophomores and juniors. Move up one more. We saw some really good growth here over last year. All, all component areas right here are increased. Our composite went from 18 to 18.7, so we went up seven tenths in the overall composite. So that's almost a full point, so we're excited about that.
What is the target that we're shooting for there? I mean, I know the background isn't wonderful, but is there a number that we, you all have in mind?
There's a composite for each content area. I want to say is 20 for composite?
Ah, it's 20, yeah. Yeah, 20 is the goal.
So we did want to share a little bit of NTI data with you. We had four NTI days this year with a student participation rate of 82% and a teacher participation rate of 90%. Now, you're asking why not 100? Sometimes teachers are not able to get here on NTI days, so that does affect our teacher participation rate. And you see our current, our upcoming school year plan for NTI at each grade level, paper packets being at the elementary, and chrome recuse at the secondary level.
Those percentage rates, is that in good shape for counting those days?
Yes. And last of all, we have already planned our professional learning, still are planning our professional development for the summer. Our professional, professional development dates will be July 29th through August 1st. We have lots going on with the most important being content-specific professional learning, so that teachers aren't learning exactly, you know, when they're teaching. We've got a lot of textbook options, especially at the secondary level, so we'll have trainings in that, curriculum development and assessment work. We've got some school reconfigurations, some school team building activities planned, our new teacher academy for our ECE department and interventionist specially designed instruction. We're doing some work, I know this, Whittle has a Central Kentucky Summer Conference. There's preschool professional learning. We're doing some work with CKEC. We have many teachers going to a national conference in Orlando called H-2-T-1. Very entertaining and really gets people pumped for the new school year. We have a number of kindergarten teachers going to LA Nashville, and some of our schools are having some breakout sessions where teachers are leading that professional learning. And last of all, we have our transition day scheduled for Friday, August 6th.
We just wanted to quickly just let you all know that Dana and I, and along with the instructional coaches, have been rethinking the model for 2425. We really want to make better use of that resource, and we're going to more of a prescriptive model. So we've been taking that data that you've been looking at and going a lot deeper into it, and instead of having instructional coaches necessarily housed in a certain site, we're going to, we're going to focus on those maximum needs areas and send them there to hopefully address our biggest needs.
Any questions?
Looking forward with the reconfiguration of middle schools, is that individual data a program to where next year, every person, if you were to say, was this a problem?
All right, moving on to item three E is our company solutions presentation.
We'll start with Mr. Deacon. I'd like for him to just kind of update you all with what, how we got here and where we're going with this, and then you can have that interject as you see fit. So thank you. And first of all, I'd like to give Mr. Deacon a shout. He's really done a lot of work in trying to find a company that meets Marion County. So as he talks, you'll see just while, thank you.
So basically, since 2015, we have been building our own systems here. It was a lot of money expenses back in the early 2010, 11 that we were spending on security and software, the doors, the cameras. And basically, in 2015, we started with the process of just bringing that all in-house, saving the district a lot of money, but at the same time...
Exactly, right there. So I, Chief Operating Officer, 2015, I saw the district has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on our security. So I went to Matt and said, Matt, can you help me with this? Can we figure out something else? And he took it and ran with it, and it has saved the district hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, so basically, we completely built our own systems in-house with servers being at each building and adding new cameras. Actually, Steve and Nathan here were the ones we picked to use their camera systems, which is good because the fact is, we won't have to rip and replace any of that with their new software. So just moving forward, it got to a point where we're as safe as we can be, but you can always do better. So we continue to just look at different programs, different software, and different processes that we could put in place, and we've come up with this solution. So we'll let them explain what they have.
So this software, what it does is it takes cameras. Since you guys have a good foundation of cameras already, they're just not the new AI type of cameras. So what we do is we take a software, we take a device, and we intercept that, we intercept that video, and we can apply analytics. So if you think about it, like in our industry, we always built, 20 years ago, we built camera systems for facilities people and maintenance people. 10 years ago, we started building camera systems for IT, for IT. Today, and the software that we're talking about is actually on Axon, the body-morned police camera. It's built for law enforcement. It's built for law enforcement response. It also works for IT, and it also works for maintenance and ability. But what we'll be able to do is have the fastest response for law enforcement to get inside of a building. There is, we'll be able to apply analytics, and so if we're looking for a bad actor with blue shirt and a backpack, we can actually go out and take cameras that have been around for seven, eight, 10 years, and we can apply the technology to those older cameras. You don't have to rip them out, don't have to replace them, utilize that technology and be able to find the person with the blue shirt and the backpack on within a matter of seconds to go find that bad actor. That's it. Do you guys have any questions, like at a high level? We're going to do the analytics. I can give you guys a panic app that can be put on your phone just at a very high level, not to go into the weeds of the software, but that panic app can be used to geolocate where that situation may be, gives that user the ability to stream footage back to a central place where your SROs, local law enforcement, anybody can see what's going on within these buildings. And then you're going to have the ability to have a mobile app that you don't have right now to be able to give Matt, the administrative team, the ability to see cameras across the district, whoever you guys give the rights to, to be able to see that and not have to rip and replace what you have right now, and then tie in local law enforcement too. Because right now, with the system you have, that would go through like a series of a VPN and just technology hurdles. This is going to eliminate all that to make it much more streamlined for you guys. Got an example of the actual panic button that anybody can have on their cell phone, where I can literally hold this down for five seconds, and then that would alert 911 to the exact location of my cell phone and where I am. There's always the question, I do not have to have cell phone service as long as I'm on Wi-Fi. So, but any, any teacher, faculty, staff, whoever you'd like, can actually have this SOS panic button. And then 911 can also track, or everybody can also track where the SROs are on the property. So to talk about the quickest law enforcement response, we can see that Officer Smith is going to be on the north side of whatever school and whatever hallway, and correlate that to where the SOS has been pushed for the fastest response.
I think when we were having discussions about this, there was conversation about how like the teacher is in trouble or dealing with the situation, they can, that system or that app also has the capability to shoot video that we can then store should we need to.
Correct.
And it's, it's not stored on that device. Greg, if you want to share a little bit about how that works, not going too far.
So when it's, when it's streamed back, it's stored in your all's cloud instance in the vault, which it's not stored on the device. So that way, personal devices, nobody's got evidence or anything like that on a personal device. It's stored with the coordinates of where that person was, how fast they might have been moving. It does have audio with that. It uploads, even when we demoed here via hotspots, and then it uploads within seconds. So it's, you know, nearly instant from the time it's sent to the time it's uploaded. Any, any footage, you know, the way you guys have your cameras right now, this will all, this will centralize anything. Any, anytime there's, you know, an incident, a fight, whatever it might be, that data can easily be pulled, put in the vault, if it needs to be downloaded and sent to law enforcement, or however it needs to be distributed, it's, it's not, you know, it's, it's not as complicated anymore where it had to be downloaded, put on, you know, I don't know how you guys used to do that before. It's just going to simplify that quite, quite a bit. But it is just a button where I can hit stream, and I can actually stream that to, you know, a security operations center, which in this case would be 911. You know, I could be a teacher that was helping students get out of an emergency situation and also streaming to law enforcement at the same time. And SROs typically have their phones, and they might even have their phone in their pocket and can be streaming in real time, knowing what's going on to give everybody else situational awareness.
Cameras work 24/7. Do they have the individual, all over the campus, parking lots covered?
Yes, we currently have 160 cameras throughout the district. They're up and down the hallways, they're on every interior door, they're on the exterior doors. We are covering the parking lots and all outside grounds.
So we're, we're still going to have our system where if a principal just needs to kind of take a perusal of the school, he still can do that.
Yes.
Through the camera system. So that's still in place. This is just going to come in and kind of pick you up on that.
Yes, yeah. And that's actually going to make it easier for them because currently, the only access that they have is they have to be in our building in order for their, because they, they do have access on an app on their phone right now, but this is going to make it viewable from anywhere because it's going to be a cloud-based software instead of locally.
One of the things that principals are most excited about, if it would leave the purple shirt on, it will actually pick that up and follow me with 146 cameras versus now where a principal, you know, they have to pull one camera, look at it, and then go pull another and follow each, to just make the process quick.
The administration has to come up with, now being a monitoring offsite, your house. Would be able to do that.
We can already do that.
Yeah, we can already do that with, with other steps, other means, but it'll streamline it where it just makes it simple now.
You have to have some sort of system where you designate some responsibilities around that is, that has to make it if we can access it and help more.
The, the software is very intuitive in terms of like, on the app that you have now, it's pretty much, you have 160 cameras that you have to scroll through, and you have to know those 160 cameras. So what this is, since it's law enforcement-based, it's actually map-based. So you could just literally draw the box and zoom into a particular hallway, and it's only going to show you those cameras in the hallway. So it's, it's a, it's a new way of faking them out and interacting with your cameras.
Is there some kind of coordination necessary with the police departments that them know that these systems would be different for them for cattle?
Yeah, we'll, we'll train with them, but I've, I've been in communication with him through the whole process too. Greg Yonk, the chief at Levitt Police Department, and, you know, Mr. Cox, the 911 coordinator, so.
And we're here to help him throughout that whole... And we're here to help him throughout that whole transition.
So the staff who are not going to use their personal cell phone, we had a tablet per se, that had to be used on that.
Yes. Android or tablet.
I think that's what, one of the things that we learned about a different type of system that you kind of batch push button and then others will just re-impact in. And our board have questions and concerns about how we kind of continue to stay ahead of the game because I think it's valuable for our district to be ahead of the game in security and, you know, all the systems that we have in place where we guys come in the building. But this allows us to continue that, but I like the fact that you can put it on a personal device. You don't have to invest in an extra piece of whatever ever coming up. I've got my phone in my pocket right now. I think probably everybody in this room does too. So it's just, it keeps things simple for our staff. It's not one additional thing that we want to have to carry in. And it's also good for our safety. Not only our students, but also our staff as well. So I commend us as a district for continuing to stay ahead of the game like we have been.
Now, do you feel I have a little bit of, in a large school district, but not issue wide, correct? Any other schools get, would be our district wide?
District-wide, mm-hmm.
Well, I like that that is, I haven't used it yet, but I'm on the same, just it seems to be just very simple process, but it's not something brand new. And, you know, come in and take everything out, starting all over. So that to me just means this could be a good addition for us, man. So I appreciate that.
I can tell you when Matt talks, what our principals have referred, this might be possible.
I have questions.
You said you could track the SROs, if, for example, this is what happened, would you be able to track the officers as well?
If you have that commitment from the police officers, yes. It's a long course with software as well, so if they, if they're using it simultaneously, then yes. But that would have to be a buy-in from them or, you know, commitment from them to be able to use it. And the way that it works, they would basically clock into a shift. When, so when I clock into my shift as an SRO, I show up on a map. So you can see where your SROs are at all times.
So would be, I mean, it would be when they come on campus necessarily, it would have to be, if we're gonna show them?
If they're clocked in, yes. Yes. And it will auto-clock them out, but yeah, there is a clock-in process.
Would this be effective for others who would be in place for the operation? Is this now?
I have it on, I'll stay on for agenda three also. Is there a?
Sarah Charles, isn't it?
Any questions?
Well, I do. I don't know. My question would be, I love, we've got some really smart kids in our area and some really smart teachers who are teaching great. I teach it up. I love before one of the kids hacked into it.
If they hack into it, I'd like to recruit them immediately. They will have a standing job offer if they can hack into it. It's made for, it's made for law enforcement, ma'am, and it's, all the three-letter agencies are using it. So it's, you know, it just happens to also work for K3 as well. So it's, meets all the government federal standards as far as cybersecurity goes. We can get you all that information if that's necessary.
Thank you.
Can I add one question? If you weren't equipped, how big is this process going to be? Be it a school year or a day?
We do think that is our infrastructure, our cameras and systems are in place, so it would be a good process as well.
The install itself, you're talking about a week, what we also do is digitize your action plans, and it's more about working with, it's all that project coordination between work and local law enforcement and the chief. But the install itself, you're only talking a few days, actually. So there's not, there's not a lot to implement. It's more than just the processes and the conversations, and how do we deliver this message? And, you know, how do we get the word out about the app, and what our processes are gonna be together?
So about how long would it take to train a teacher or a principal or what? Is it a day? Is it more than a day? And I know it's gonna vary for the individual, and we want to make sure we're secure, but generally speaking, how much time?
Ideally, if they can watch a, if we can put together a two to four-minute, like, video and send that out, if that's acceptable, then that would take two to four minutes.
I guess, I was just thinking about the training piece of it, where they felt comfortable if they were able to ask and they could come back and order in the rooms that are small.
So we're sure it's going to be a relative process, that the trainers provide you with some?
Correct. Yeah, if somebody's gonna be utilizing it, doing the search functionality, training should probably be done in three 15 to 30-minute increments to be fully efficient and understanding. So like, you will get a login, and if you just play around with it, you're not gonna break it. If you just play around with it, you're gonna figure it out within about 15 minutes. If you're savvy on a computer, it's gonna be way less than that. And then it's just a matter of utilizing it to, the more you utilize it, the faster you get on searches, just like anything else.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Moving on to item three, your attendance enrollment report.
Good evening. Good evening, students.
Hello.
All right, for our enrollment report, this was done on May 6. For Calvary Elementary, they have 208, and with preschool, a total of 225. Glass Hook Elementary, with their preschool, has 463. Lebanon Elementary has 313 students, 20 preschoolers for 333. West Marion has a total enrollment of 354 with 35 preschoolers for a total of 389. The middle school has a total of, Marion County Middle School has a total of 403. Marion County Night Academy, 470. Marion County High School has 673 students, and QC Spotting Academy has 160. We have a total in our district, including preschool, of 3,116. Our attendance, our monthly attendance for April was 93.6. Glad to see that green again. For the year today, we have continued to be in the green, and for April, all the way up until April, it was 92.97. This is April 11 through May 9, so a lot more green than we've seen in the past. You know, there have been a couple of days here and there with the day before prom, or I think one day was a senior skip day, but overall, it has improved and we're seeing more green. We are 164 days in with 10 days remaining, which is unbelievable. Four empty-out days, four make-up days. We have 152 homeschool students. I did talk to Ms. Cox, and we've had some homeschool students who are interested in coming back to MCTS, who are more of a program. For our district report, Infinite Campus, we've been working with Infinite Campus to upload the addresses in our system, and it can campus that will say, you know, if you live at this address, you're gonna go to Marion County Middle School. If you live at this address, you're gonna go to LMS. We are expecting for that to be finalized soon. Ms. Debbie Farmer and I will be meeting with our representative from Infinite Campus on Monday morning. We are also working on a welcome letter to inform families of which middle school their child will attend for the 24, 25 school year, and we're continuing our work on the elementary draft boundary lines.
Any questions?
At one point, will parents know?
For the middle schools, I anticipate before school, that we will send them a letter.
Generally speaking, they have, if there's one or two here in there, then they're making a question.
Have a question. Thank you. Moving on to item 3H, Mr. Paulman.
So looking at the financial summary from the month of April, we're pretty consistent with what we've seen the first nine months of this year, fiscal year. Interest gives to be a big one, I will point out the utility tax right now, it's showing through April, we're down 41,000. However, we received the April payment, May 1st, so it'll be a double up month, and that's 175,000, so more like 130 to good on utility tax. So overall, revenues are up a million dollars per day, but half of it, I'll point out, is for over 540,000 on interest today. So that's what half of that, a million dollars. Looking at expenses, again, it's very, very consistent month-to-month. As we approach the end of this fiscal year, the two big things, you'll see the plant operation maintenance is negative 581. A lot of this have to do with the interest claim for the March 3rd, 2024, uh, 2023, Winston, and then the races that was given last year. So overall, we're down 920, so we're plus one, about one big for the year going into the month of May. I can share with you all the spreadsheet of kind of higher bigger things. Running direct transportation, you know, diesel is down this year about $80,000. I'd like to do with the pump price, assumptions about the same, the pump price is down. And then if you look at the, kind of dive into more, that 581, we spent more on plant operation maintenance. This year, on building repair maintenance, it shows that we're pretty consistent. Though we're actually, so it's too big to learn by how it'll work, spent this year. You take that big place for replacement on a minus half of cash back beginning of July of last year. So we're actually 167, so we're actually less on building repair maintenance this year than we were this time. So we've done a lot better job.
Questions for you? Moving on to item four, I need a motion on item 4A, please.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of fiscal year '25 emergency provisional certification for teachers and substitute teachers.
Second.
Any questions here? All in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna table item 4B and move on to the next time. So moving on to item five, I need a motion on item 5A, please.
I want a motion to consider approval of payout number one and associated PPOs from Central Kentucky Glass in the total amount of $11,812.50 for the Marion County Middle School partial window placement, BG 24-120.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any motion on item five, please, please?
Move to consider approval of payout number 13 to Briggs Enterprises in the amount of $637,375.04 for work performed and $421,556.43 to vendors for materials on the new Calvary Elementary School, BG number 22-052.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item 5C.
Make a motion to consider approval of change order number 13 for the new Calvary Elementary School, BG number 22-052.
Second.
Mr. Brady, want to detail what's in there?
It's my understanding, and I'm ready for interjection, it's my understanding that in the planning process in the conference room of the Calvary Elementary School office, the thrifts were a panel resource center, backs up to that, and there's a four-inch wall that needed to be a six-inch wall because there's a washer in that area, so they're gonna add additional, two inches to that wall so that it's not.
That is correct. There's a lot of plumbing, because there's a sink on that wall, there's also the washer and dryer on that wall, so there's a lot of plumbing, and the bin that's in that wall, and the wall needed to be bigger than it was shown to be to accommodate both the plumbing and the bins, but also make sure we got some sound attenuation for that compressor and kind of keep that compressor quiet and not have that bin plumbing being a releasing factor in that compressor. So that wall's been furried out, and it's still a major wall finish, it's just for the purring to make that wall bigger than it was shown to be.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item 5D, please. I'll make a motion to consider approval of the 23, 24 KBE audit contract.
Second.
Any questions here? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item 5E.
Make a motion to consider approval of fiscal year '25 tentative budget.
Second.
Sky, anything you want, Holly?
Sure. It's, this budget is to the, what we know today, as far as salaries of our employees who will leave here next year, so it's a little bit of a lecture flow then. When you use the CIC forecast, the KD is put out. The interest rate we spoke of a few minutes ago is included in this, and we're gonna spend extra cost time to do a general fund. So I feel, but it's a fairly high reflected budget.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any motion on item 5F?
Move to consider approval of the 20, 24, '25 salary schedule. I don't have the attachment, but I presume that it'll be posted to the Marion County website. And I have seen the schedule, I just don't have it.
Second. Mr. Brady?
Yeah, so what I would like to point out about the salary schedule, when the board had the work session, they indicated that every additional C dollar that we worked due to receive next year, that that amount be allocated for raises next year. And then in addition, they also added some additional general fund dollars. What I want to specifically say is, you know, you've heard, you've seen, you take the teachers on the O, and Facebook posts, and on the news, you've heard districts say they're giving, you know, five, six, seven percent. And what I have to say to that is, this board has done their due diligence in giving historic raises last year, and in addition to that, proposed 3.5%. So what I would say as far as, you know, in those posts, and what you see is, you know, our staff members over the past two years have seen as high as 17.5%. So, you know, for the districts who are getting larger raises this year, Marion County Public Schools is already higher than those districts, even with those raises. So I just want to point that out, and commend the board for really putting our staff first and paying our people a really good raise.
And I think, you know, Peggy and I have been around the same amount of time, and we know that we had kind of gotten into a pattern where we did one year of a big salary schedule increase to play catch-up, and then we maybe didn't do so well on raises for the next one to two years. And then we had to play catch-ups, you know, with other districts. And so what we wanted to do is to get out of that pattern. So last year, we did a substantial raise, and you all did a deep dive on our salary schedule to see kind of where we were less competitive, where we were sitting solid, and kind of really took a really hard look. And so that led our board to make a decision that reflected the appreciation and the gratitude that we have for our staff last year. And so with this raise, we wanted to kind of continue to stay ahead of the game, to stay ahead of other districts, so that we can say Marion County is a spectacular place to work, not only because of the culture that's being built here and the things that are happening in each and every building, but also with where the road meets the road, which is salary. We all know that that's meaningful, and so I think I am glad to work alongside these wonderful people because we understand the commitment that it takes for you all to be in the classrooms and in the offices in our buildings and doing all of the things that you do. So we just, we want to stop playing catch-up every couple of years and really just make sure that we consistently stay ahead of the game with you all. So, you know, that's, that's what we want to continue to strive to do each and every year when we approve this salary schedule.
And I just want to support all of that, and next year's CIC funding is projected to, you know, I'm not a big picture, so I just hope we can do that every year, get all of the CIC increase to staff and more, because we care about our staff.
I will just add to this because, you know, I know a lot of you, and I know a lot of parents, and I know that we could have not given that raise last year, and we would have still had great dedication. The scores, you would have done everything possible to help those students achieve. And the same thing with this year, if we had looked at you all and said, we had a really big one last year. We really need to do this this year, you all would have understood it. But the problem with that is, you would have understood, but we need you to understand that we're gonna be behind you, but you're gonna be behind the children. And so we can't make all dreams come true. And so we can't make all dreams come true. We really wish we could, but we sure can let you know how much we appreciate all of you. And this whole board, I mean, uh, we were bound and determined to figure out how we could make this possible. And I, I appreciate working with these individuals too in our superintendent and this kid, it keeps us strong.
Basically, we have money on it. That's the reason, if we don't, we can't, so.
Anything you'd like to add, Debbie?
I'm just very grateful for all the staff that was out that put a hundred percent us into teaching our kids. They are our children, every one of them.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item five G, please?
Make a motion to consider approval of twenty-four, twenty-five school fees.
Second.
Anybody?
Yeah.
I'm going to say Debbie. Questions here, anything you want to add?
We need to try to prove it by, uh, group of school, elementary, middle and high that was consistent across the district.
And as always, we know that as a district, we've got systems in place for children who are able to participate regardless of their financial situation at home. So we just want to always make sure that that's an important consideration that we. All in favor?
Aye.
Any motion on item five H, please?
Make a motion to consider approval of five extended days per day number only for the twenty-three, twenty-four, what? Okay, twenty-three, twenty-four school year paid for Glass Hook SPDM.
Second.
So Glass Hook had asked, uh, first training to have those days. She attended some, uh, additional training back in the summer, which warranted, uh, the additional days so that she could spend that time with the students this year.
Hey, I think it's, I have seen some of the most outstanding after-school frisky activities. They look so fun. It's like you want to join in with them. So I just really, really appreciate the creativity and the dedication on that because it's, it's amazing.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any motion on item five I, please?
I'll move that we consider accepting, acceptance of auctionary service bids. And it's showing a couple of attachments.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any motion on item five J?
I'll move to consider approval to award the auctioneer service bid.
Carney Land.
It was Carney Land Brokers LLC.
Second.
And I've, I've actually worked with Stephen on another project. He wasn't sold there on this, and I will, um, work with Stephen on another project and he is professional. He is knowledgeable. He is supportive and, um, just an all-around good guy. So I, I'm excited to see, um, the opportunity for him to work with our district and, um, yeah, he's, he's a good dude. I enjoy him quite a bit. Um, any questions here?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any motion on item five K, please?
Make a motion to consider acceptance of Chromebook bids.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item five L, please?
Make a motion to consider approval to award the Chromebook bid, a, a, a service bid to truck care. Uh, it includes white gloves and also four-year warranties.
Second. Uh, Mr. Brady, since there's a separate thing, do you want to talk to us a little bit about what that white glove service is?
Yeah, so, uh, what the white glove service does, my understanding, and this is still for a gentleman, but they actually come and they unbox the equipment, make sure there's no damage coming in. And when you order, have a order that large, we'll come with some units that are inoperable. So they make sure everything's in operation, they help tag that equipment. Just makes the, an integration of the schools a lot quicker.
Actually, they've always charged for it. It's, it's not why we chose that particular company. Actually, they had the best price for the Chromebooks that we're purchasing. It just happened to be a little bit of, you know, sprinkles on top for us. And so they will unbox the items and so we're planning on making a substantial purchase with ASRS funds that we have left. And, um, all the schools don't know this yet, but we plan on inserting them into the fifth grade and ninth grade. So that's the two grade levels that will receive these, part, part of these Chromebooks. So that elementary schools, those would be the ones that they're wearing that, so.
This will be the last year.
Correct. Correct. Any questions?
The, the four-year warranty is just something we have to have. Is that a state rule or is that?
It is, it is not. However, it's been very beneficial, um, because the pricing of it is so low. Usually we try to get the, I mean, it's four years and it's accidental damage. We still work on recovering those costs. Um, but, um, like I said, that something went wrong with their charger, they would replace that if it was accidental. Yes. So.
Do you know approximately how many, like, fifth graders or ninth graders we're looking at?
It's a, it's about four hundred, just a little bit over.
What is the total contract over roughly? How many are we buying all to give?
We'll end up purchasing twelve hundred. It's a fine.
Is that a pretty consistent number year to year?
No, it is not. It is, I mean, we don't, this is, we're utilizing the ASRS funds. Um, you know, we're fleeting those funds, isn't it? I mean, that's what we're going to do. Um, and so that will happen on hand.
Okay.
We don't want to waste that money and just let it go.
Well, we're also hoping we're going to increase our numbers coming back.
Yes.
Except we're going to need a few extra for those students to transfer being, uh, come back from homeschool and all that good stuff, so.
And what is the typical, uh, purchase number that we get each year?
Um, it's usually about five hundred. When we do the fifth and the ninth grade, so.
Wonderful, you said that already, Matt?
Thank you.
Any other questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any other motion on item five N, please?
Make a motion to consider approval of items for surplus auction.
Second.
That attachment is, uh, can cover anything from junk to a find of a lifetime. This lady's, I covered that.
Any other questions for Tom? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item five N, please? I'll make a motion to consider approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five phase for NCI non-traditional instruction continuation of district learning plan.
Second.
Any questions here? Favor changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any motion on item five O?
Make a motion to consider approval of the twenty and twenty-four, twenty-five phase for district professional development plan.
Second.
Any questions here? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to item five P, acknowledgement of field trips. So acknowledged, I need a motion on item six, please?
Make a motion to approve student learning support incentives, A, through, you know.
Uh, just a big thank you to Ingersoll Rand for donation of an eight-gallon gasoline-powered air compressor. I remember those are very important, so, um, and expensive. So thank you very much to Ingersoll Rand. We love those community partners. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to item seven, acknowledgement of personnel actions. So acknowledged. And any, any motion on item eight, please?
Make a motion to go into closed session, hundred K R S sixty-one point eight one zero. For discussion, which might be to this one of a student.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.